All this meeting to order. Past memories of the GAV. Good evening, I'll call this meeting to order. Chairman Spanos's family commitment has been scheduled quite some time, so he is absent today. So Mr. Hodges and I will run tonight's meeting. Start off with a pledge of allegiance, can you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands on the nation under God, in the soul, in the religion and in the testament of God.
Minutes from the last meeting. I have nothing. Would like to make a motion. A motion that passed. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any comments on our upcoming calendar?
I have nothing.
More, aye. Previously signed documents?
Motion accept.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Update from the nursing home nurse leader, Shelley.
Hi Shelley.
Hi. Good evening, good, how's everybody? Um, so this summary that I have shared with you actually covers from October 1st of last year to March 31st of this year. You can see we've had no new hires in administration, no vacant positions. Our Medicaid rate has gone up to $283.34. And July will be issued a new rate after we get our algorithm and case mix done by the state. We're currently at 63 patients, which is 67% occupancy, which is getting towards that 70%. We have only one Medicaid pending right now. I have limited the amount of staff that we have, we have, I'm sorry, listed the staff. We have 102 employees consisting of 76 part-time, 76 full-time, 12 part-time, registry staff 14. Agency staff, we're down. We were running this time last year 12 to 14 agency staff. We're running seven to eight, so we've almost won 50%. Which also will attribute, be attributed to some of our cost savings that we save. In 2024, we hired 28 people. We had 13 either retire, resign, or were terminated. As of up to March 31st, we hired 11 people. And we had seven people that were either retired, terminated, or had resigned. I have listed the education that we provided during that time span. And then some of the quality assurance projects that we've worked on in the nursing home. Mostly it's things that trigger in our nursing home compare, which is medication, which type antipsychotics for behavior, type meds, falls, and also residents that have urinary tract Foley, they have Foley catheters in. And that is, sometimes we have no choice in that, we can't, it's what we have for residents and what they require. So we're kind of at the mercy of that number. It's, it's very difficult to change. Mandatory vaccines still no longer, we offered the booster to everybody for COVID. Flu season was here, we did masks for those people that did not get the flu shot till March 31st, and that's done. The following projects we're working on, the domestic boiler, the installation, we're still on the old system, but the new system is all in place. We just had the final inspection, actually, when I did this, we were waiting for it. They're going to, next Monday, turn it over, we're going to be three hours without hot water. And then they're going to just see that everything transitions smoothly and hopefully, thank you, it's crossed, everything will, will go right over and we'll be fine. The renovations for the kitchenettes, nurse's station, staff development office, and the therapy countertop, all the templating has been done, we've picked out the cabinets and the countertops. We're just waiting for Denison to give us their scheduled date for it. It'll probably be two to three weeks to get the whole project done, depending on when they start. The kitchen steamer, we did get the bid awarded and we're waiting for them. The steamer hasn't been sent to the installer here in Laconia. Soon as it does, we'll get a date for that. The pharmacy, not pharmacy, the fire department was in, they did the occupancy permits, updated them for this room, the activity room and the dining room. We also have the master alarm is now on the cellular online, and they've got all keys and badges to get into the building. So they're, they're good with that. Employee shooting star of the month, I put them in, we've had some people from nursing, activities, and restorative, along with the dietary person. We have no vacant positions in activities. We have, I've listed what we did in October, November, December, January for all the residents. And the spotlights for the residents for those months. In housekeeping, we had one new hire full-time, Julian Eldridge. Will be starting as a full-time housekeeper, we have no vacant positions anymore. Maintenance is full. Dietary, we have Glendale Dining Services, which was sold and acquired January 21st by Whitson's. And the owner is Paul Whitcomb, it's a New York company. They do a lot of school systems, they do have some residential facilities. They have been in business since 1979. Aside of this report, just an FYI, we are, have put out an RFP this week, we're going to be, we've had some challenges with meals, with diets, with staffing, with the dining room being open. It's open right now, Monday through Friday, breakfast, lunch, and supper. But not weekends and sometimes holidays, so it sometimes can be an issue with that, with the residents and families. I have the inmate meals served there and laundry, laundry is, is full. No open positions there, nursing. So I've listed the nursing, the hires that we had from October to December of last year, and then the hires from January to March. The positions that we have vacant now, I've listed them according to shift, what we have full-time, part-time, and what role they are. The agencies that we're using for travel staff. We have still actually four LNA's that successfully completed the med tech program. So they all passed, and they're all being orientated to be able to do that role. We have the extra week incentive from last year, we spent $20,000 extra on, which is when we're short on the weekend, people will pick up a weekend and they get $150 stipend extra. And then for January to March, we've spent $17,000 on that. The mandatory staff coverage for anybody working October 1st through December 31st was only required one time, we had to mandate somebody, so that's excellent. And then we did not have anybody that we needed to mandate January to March of this year. We had the full week incentive program that is still going on, and the costs are there. We have the emergency shift, which was extra $20 for somebody to work on a weekend that we were low. We have not had to do that at all, January to March. It was October to December, which is more the holidays of the end of last year, where we needed some extra people. Plymouth High School just ended their clinicals this weekend. The students that came, they were 18, LNA students, we have one application. The Hewitt students started March 7th, there's six students there, and they'll be going probably till June. Myself and the county administrator met up at Lakes Region Community College. We met with the program director, the RN up there. We did a lot of kind of problem solving, talking about what's going on and how we can get people in. We've given them the flyers and what we have available for tuition assistance. And they've been great to work with. We have two students right now going there. Actually, one student, I'm sorry, one RN and two that are going to the LNA program, which starts in May, and that'll be May to July. We have two students that are in, one is in the RN program at the college, she has another year at Lakes Region Community College. And we have one student that is at LNA Health Careers, that is doing the LPN program. She'll be done in the spring and then take her boards. And we have another staff member that did not do tuition assistance with us, but is going to be doing the incentive of tuition reimbursement, educational stipend after she graduates. She'll be, after 90 days, she'll be eligible for the $192 a week as long as she works here. And she'll be in the LPN as long as she, she passes her boards. All in all, I think we're doing better.
Shows that.
Yeah, I think so, I think we're seeing some light at the end of the tunnel. We also have joined with Guilford High School, their shadow program. So Thursday, we have eight students coming that are interested in becoming nurses or LNA's. They're going to be here for the day from nine to one. And we have the Hewitt Center, we will be at their job fair also, which will be in May.
Great.
So it's good, good, good news.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
There are reports as always. Few thoughts and questions that came up as you're going through it. So on the occupancy and kind of revenue side of things, did I hear you correct that we're currently at 66%?
63 is 67%.
Okay, so, so we're at 67%. So what was the 25 budget revenue number based off, was it based off of?
70%.
Was based off of 70 for the entire year?
I think so, yeah, I think we did expense and budget on 70%.
Okay. So we're getting closer to where we anticipated.
Yes.
Right, okay. On the five-star piece?
Yes.
So three of, yeah, three out of the four segments?
Yep.
Am I reading that correct, we ranked five, and just the quality measures?
Yeah, that's the one that I was saying was, it's tough because it depends on the patient you have. Depends on if they fall, if they have medicine that they consider on, on the list that they look at, or if they have a Foley catheter, which we don't have control over.
Gotcha, okay.
So that, that one really is kind of.
Out of our control.
Yeah.
Okay, great. On the boiler installation and the, and the hot water being down for three hours?
Yep.
Does that create any concerns?
We'll, we'll do, we've done it before, we'll do baths in the morning early, and we'll do paper trays and paper plates at lunch, so that, we usually like to shut the water off and get it done like in that 11 to 2, in case we have any issues.
Yep.
We don't, it's done before evening time comes.
Okay.
And it's just going to be one day.
And that's just on the nursing home side of the complex? Or is that the entire complex?
Will probably affect sheriff and then admin. Admin, I think, I'm not sure about sheriff, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we coordinate that. Yeah, yeah.
And the, you, the new service in the kitchen?
The RFP I'll be putting out this week.
Oh, with the hot water, they're, so they're aware of that, that's.
Yes.
The whole thing. Oh, and the, along with dietary, so the new company, they're honoring our current contract for 25? Okay, but you certainly, it sounds like you have some challenges with that, with not have prior contractor.
Um, I don't think it's really fair to say that it's the new one, it's been ongoing, yeah, yeah.
The RFP is out, when's that close?
The RFP, well, I'll be going out, right? We'll be going out this week.
So all I have?
Shelley, congratulations on getting the traveling nurses.
Yep.
Down to where it is. I know that wasn't easy, and that's huge expense for us, and it's a really big savings. So that, that's, that's super news. And just real quickly on the dining room being closed in the weekends?
Yep.
Is that a, the meals get taken into the individual rooms during the weekends?
Yes, or the day room on the unit.
Okay, or the day, okay. It's just that the, the families aren't able to come in and go in the dining room.
Then, yeah, the dining room's not open. If they wanted to take their loved one, they could eat in the family room or the activity room or the cafe.
Okay.
It's just that the dining room itself isn't doing a full-service meal.
Okay. Are they still providing meals and services for the staff?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's still available on the weekend?
Yes.
Great report, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks.
Thanks, Shelley.
Lori, you're up.
I need to talk to you, Lori.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Great. First report is the accounts receivable report. Collections in February included some 2024 receivables, and you can see that based on the percent collected of 107%. That's because that takes into consideration that prior year receivable. They're continuing, we're continuing to collect at around 98%, which means that at the end of the year, we roughly will have around a 2% write-off, which is a very good place to be. The cash flow report, since I reported last, we closed on the first tan of 2025. We received three bids, the treasurer chose M&amp;T Bank, who provided the lowest interest rate and fees at 3.91%. The amount borrowed was $11,740,000. And the interest to be paid on that would be $381,203, and that falls in line with what was budgeted. So we're, we should be fine there. We've received other bids from Bank of New Hampshire at 5.25% and Webster Bank at 3.925%, very close to M&amp;T Bank, but their fees were actually higher. And so that was the reason for the decision, decision to go with M&amp;T Bank. Our current position, cash position, is $9,116,911, as shown on the cash flow in April. And we will be looking at a second tan come this fall, pretty much the same as about where we were last year. The revenue report, they are 29% through 2025. I am projecting a $458,960 revenue surplus overall right now. In finance, I project $150,000 surplus due to interest rates that have remained at a constant for earning. Currently, they are at 4.27%. In the sheriff's department, we're projecting a $57,500 surplus, and that's due to fees and court security revenue. And while you're looking at that court security line, it says 17% year-to-date, so that can be a little bit misleading, but that is for actually two months of actual data. Not unusual, usually the receipts from the state are a month or two in the rears, so that's not unusual. Corrections, I'm projecting a $3,500 surplus due to miscellaneous income. That miscellaneous income is driven specifically by social security benefits that inmates get, which goes to the county during, or if they are incarcerated. Restorative justice, I'm projecting a $500 surplus, and that's due to the collection of program fees. The nursing home, we're projecting a $247,460 surplus, and that's mostly due to the private pay census, which remains higher than when we had prepared the budget. Currently, we have 11 private pay residents. Registry of deeds is only at 22%, however, I'm not concerned with that. Historically, that's where we are at this point in the year coming out of winter. And recently, in speaking with that department, they are reporting that business has been increasing. The expense side, again, we are 29% through 2025. The general fund budget is 26% spent overall, and the nursing home is also at 26% spent. I'm projecting a bottom-line surplus right now of $108,269. $10,767 of that is in the general front fund, which is spread over multiple departments. I wouldn't say there's any one particular area that's driving that right now. Unlike in the nursing home, which is projecting a $97,502 surplus, and that is mostly because of the contracted nursing line. Shelley just mentioned the reason for that, and so that is creating some significant surplus there, which of course may increase, we'll report on that, but these are reports based on the numbers that we have to date right now. And, yeah, actually, that was my last item to highlight on our financial report.
Is there anything on the expense of revenues to be in line? And the $400,000 seems to be in line with the additional expenses. The, on the expense side, anything out of the ordinary in the first four months? Or anything that you're hearing that may be out of the ordinary that we should be thinking about?
I wouldn't say at this point there's anything that's screaming crisis, but I would say that in maintenance, we're just keeping an eye on the heating fuel line. And so for that area right now, and I forget exactly where that's at, but it is, it is a spot of concern that we're just going to keep an eye on. And obviously, you know, as the next few months, we're at 60% spent on that line right now. And that also might not be terribly unusual because we just came out of winter, it was really cold, and so let's see what happens over the next few months. If we get some warm weather, hopefully, pretty soon. But that would be the only spot that I can really think of as a place to just kind of keep an eye on.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, all right, thank you, I think I'm going to stay.
Thanks a lot.
Are you still up?
I think I'm still up too.
Yeah.
I am, I'm still here.
Request coming from you again, or from Lori direct, or?
It's, it's a teamwork thing, I would say. Essentially, yes, we're requesting that you authorize the finance director to sign the cruiser lease agreement for the two new sheriff's office cruisers upon all the documentation that the leasing company has requested. So that's all underway right now, and then all of a sudden it will be ready, and it would be most convenient if someone here, being finance director, could have your authority to sign off and get those pictures delivered.
And the, the payments schedule that's listed here, that, again, that's for two vehicles?
It is for two vehicles for three years. And just a little bit of history, I reached out to Ford and this other company called Salisbury Hill. We've done work with Ford, they did financing for us for the nursing home bus, and then they did financing for us last year on two vehicles in the sheriff's department. And unfortunately, Ford is maybe somewhat easier to deal with because Ford Motor Finance or Ford Credit, dealing with Ford dealership, it just flows real nicely. So it just, I think there's a few extra steps to deal with this other company, but for instance, Ford came in at 7.79% interest rates, and this other company is at 5.43%, so it's a considerable difference, a little bit more paperwork that we have to do, but I think it's certainly worth it in the end. It is a three-year lease, and it does have a clause, for some reason, there was not, non-financing. It is a three, um, year lease and it does have a clause, for some reason, there was not, non-financing. Um, else can I tell you? At least, uh, the vehicles are at reponey, um, they are on the state bid website, the pricing we're getting is actually understated.
And are these fully equipped or is there?
That will be fully equipped, yeah.
Fully equipped, so all that's rolled into place.
It is.
I will move the request as presented.
I'll second.
You have something to add or question?
I was just gonna say, the vehicles are here in the state, so as soon as it's signed, we can get them.
Yes.
Okay, that's all right. I'll second.
All in favors?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Next, we've got a couple of pieces of correspondence that the commission has received and I'm gonna take them, uh, in reverse order. So first is the opposition to the sheriff immigration agreement. I believe this was received from, uh, Mr. Wood. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Wood, is Mr. Wood here? Would you like to speak to the correspondence that you presented us?
We'll include the, uh, we'll include the correspondence that were received as part of the minutes.
I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll include that, your correspondence as part of the minutes to the meeting as well.
Sure.
So they'll be included in the meeting.
Um, thank you, Patrick Wood from Laconia. Um, it really was an opposition to the sheriff's uh, agreement, it was more opposition to what was being proposed to the Laconia City Council.
Okay.
Um. I met with the sheriff, uh, two weeks ago, uh, today. Uh, and we had a very good meeting, we talked about it, it's my understanding from the sheriff that, um, he is fully on board with everything that complies with the concept of due process, which is what I've talked about in the memo. Uh, and that the warrants that they would be enforcing would be warrants that be issued by a judge. Uh, Immigration and Customs Enforcement have their own detainers or warrants. And what I've expressed in the memo is that those warrants do not necessarily follow due process. And they can decide that they want to pick somebody up just because they want to pick somebody up. My concern is that's a civil matter. Uh, we don't want our law enforcement officers dealing with civil matters. Criminal matters, yes. If a judge says this person should be picked up, yes. We cooperate fully with ICE, we always should cooperate with any federal o- office. Um, so I, no opposition to that at all, and that was my understanding when I talked with Sheriff Wright. Um, it was very, uh, open and frank discussion. I wasn't quite sure what to expect when I got there. But it was a, a very friendly conversation and, um, and a very thorough conversation, so I just thought it would be fair to you to know why my, my concerns were expressed, uh, to the sheriff. So that's what that's about.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
The, the other piece correspondence we received was, uh, in regards to our motion and requests that we made at our last meeting. Uh, and Mr. Shackett did send, uh, notice to Chair of the, of the delegation on April, or on Thursday, April tenth, requesting, uh, that the delegation hold a public hearing in accordance with twenty-four fourteen A to consider supplemental appropriation to restore funding to the UNH Extension Service, Conservation District and CASA. Then, once they determine a time to let her know, uh, and I'll just. Say that again? Speak up. Talk loud, but I'll, so, uh, the, the email that went out on April tenth after our April, what was it? Uh, must have been April sixth meeting. So we're in that regard on that Monday. Uh, that the Board of Commissioners request that you hold a public hearing in accordance with RSA twenty-four fourteen A to consider supplemental appropriation to restore funding to UNH Extension Service, Conservation District and CASA. And then requesting, uh, to let her know when that time will be. On April sixteenth, we, Chairman Spanos received, uh, hand-delivered correspondence in response to that from the Chair of the delegation and I believe uh, one other delegation member was with him when this was, was, uh, hand-delivered. And it reads, uh, to Chairman Spanos, "This is to acknowledge your request to hold a public hearing in accordance with RSA twenty-four fourteen A to consider a, a supplemental appropriations to, quote-unquote, 'restore' funding to UNH Extension Service, Conservation District and CASA. 'The meeting will not be set as we find that the request does not meet the requirements of twenty-four fourteen A.' Signed, Chairman of the Delegation, Harry Bean." I've got, uh, several thoughts on this response. Uh, first and foremost is I'm, I'm confused as to one, how, uh, one member of the delegation, although being the Chair of the delegation, has, or believes has the authority to de- decline a request from the Board of Commissioners to hold a meeting. Uh, I believe that would need to be, that authority would need to be with the majority of the delegation. Uh, I have concerns that this was hand-delivered again by one, I believe, two representatives. So I don't know if there was discussions amongst the delegation that they didn't want to have a meeting. Uh, that's the first concerns I have with this letter. Before I go any further, Michelle Hodges, you got anything else to add on that piece?
I would, no, I would just like to say that we made a legal request. Um, I think if the delegation's gonna decline, they need to give us a reason why they're declining.
Right, and my understanding, um, I mean, Mr. Shackett, you can relay, if, if they gave any specific details to Commissioner Spanos when they handed in the letter, did he relay anything to you as to reasons as to why they believe, uh, that the request does not meet the requirements?
They just told him to keep reading the statute to figure it out.
Okay. Who gave no information, not willing to share what, why they believe, or let me rephrase that, why he believes. Let me be very, very careful in that this is not a, this is not a letter from the delegation, it's a letter from one representative saying that denies a request to meet. And that was, no, give no reason as to why he denied or believes that the request was invalid.
That's correct.
Is that fair? Okay, okay. Again, I, I am, I don't understand why that would be, I don't understand why Chairman Bean wouldn't provide information as to why he believes it's not valid. Um, we are here trying to do what we believe is right for the county. Um, they, or he is appearing to stand in the way of that, I don't know why, what the reluctance of how, holding a public hearing or meeting about this would be. I, I guess we are where we are with this. Uh, I, I don't think either, either side wants to get into a legal battle as to whether our, our request was valid, we believe that it is. What I certainly would question is to, one, how one member of the delegation gets to unilaterally make that determination. Um. I, I guess my, my thought is that tonight we would reconfirm our motion that we made two weeks ago. Um, I can certainly provide a bit more details that can be included in the, in the request. But I guess I, I just wanna, we read, if we read twenty-four fourteen A, RSA twenty-four fourteen A, supplemental appropriations. Commissioners may apply to the county convention for an appropriation to be made subsequent to the adoption of the annual county budget. So we, we certainly pass that. Or the convention on its own can, they can, they can request a supplemental appropriation, that's not relevant here. So once the commissioners have made, then it says, "The clerk of the convention shall deliver or mail to each member of the county convention." Will be in office on the date of the convention vote, so will be in office when they hold the meeting. And deliver to each chairperson of the Board of Selectment in each town and the mayor of each city within the county and to the Secretary of State a statement including the amount of proposed supplemental appropriations and the objects for which the money is required. So that's, the way the statute reads, the clerk of the convention would be required to send detailed information to every member of the delegation, every town select board and every mayor, secretary of state, and secretary of state. So I'm, I guess I'm curious as to whether the clerk did that upon our request. I think it's probably safe to assume no.
And no doubt, answer.
I'm assuming no. I, yeah, I think, I can only assume no, she did not do that. Typically, the clerk would ask someone in, in our office to do that and we generally prepare those notices and send them.
Right.
So I haven't heard, um, anything to the contrary, I don't believe that's ever.
Which historically would have been, the commissioners would make the request and then there'd be correspondence between your office and the clerk, you would assist them in pulling the information together and then we would, in essence, the, we, the county would mail, incur the cost for mailing it out.
Yes.
And none of that, none of that conversation took place.
No.
All that took place was we receive, or well, Commissioner Spanos received a, a signed letter from Chairman Bean saying the request is, is, does, does not meet the requirements.
Correct.
Okay.
I did ask.
I don't see anywhere in here where our initial request doesn't meet. And then it goes on to say, "The convention shall schedule a public hearing on such appropriation to be held within thirty days of the mailing or delivery of said statement." So once the clerk and/or we as the county on behalf of the clerk put that notice in ma- in the mail, then they must, shall, schedule a meeting thirty days from that point.
Yes.
Notice the date of said merit meeting and the date of the convention vote on proposed appropriations, so accompany the statement. So we would need that they would, when the, when that notice goes out, the Chair would need to set the date of the meeting.
Yes, it has to be included in the notice.
In the original, in that notice that, that goes out.
Yes.
None of that discussion happened other than getting this letter.
I did ask through, um, text message if, if he, if the Chair had made any progress on scheduling a meeting. But I've got no response to that.
No response. Okay, and then the final sta- sentence just says, "A supplemental county appropriation shall require a vote of the county convention that provided in twenty-four thirteen." Okay. So I, I I don't think I need to make a new motion, but I, I will make a motion to reconsider, or for the delegation to reconsider our request from, what, what day was that? April?
Eighth.
Eighth?
Eighth is when you made the first motion.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna make a motion that to, to ask the delegation to reconsider our original request from our April eighth meeting. To be specific, the request for the supplemental appropriation is for an additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the outside agencies line of zero one forty-six hundred. And that can be further detailed and specific as to the UNH Cooperative Extension, hundred thousand dollars. Bellnap County Conservation District, twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty. And CASA, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Math is correct, that's a hundred and thirty thousand. That's my, that's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna make a, another motion. And in conjunction with our request for twenty-four fourteen A, I'm gonna make a, a motion and a request to delegation hold a meeting according to RSA twenty-four nineteen C, which is for further meetings. Now, I'll read the motion, I'll read the RSA and then see if I have a second. So twenty-four fourteen, uh, twenty-four nineteen C, further meetings, says, "The chairperson of the convention or a majority of the members of the convention may, and the chairperson of the convention upon the written request of the county commissioners, shall call a further meeting for meetings of the county convention on a day in which there is a meeting of the House of Representatives, such meetings may be held only in the city or town in which such meetings of the House of Representatives is held. On days when there is no meetings of the House of Representatives, such meetings may be held at any place in the county."
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I guess I'm gonna go on further saying, we'll certainly open up to public, uh, that, that should Chairman Bean or any other delegation member have a question with our request or, or not understand why, I, I invite them to come to one of our, our meetings here. Uh, we meet every other Monday at five fifteen and, and welcome the open public discussion as to why it would be that this request is being denied. Cause I can, I, I'm at a loss as to what reasoning that might be, I, I don't know if Mr. Hodges.
No, I, I, I will second that. I, I certainly don't want to incur any legal costs in this matter. Um, I don't think the county should be exposed to legal costs. I think it's a pretty straightforward request and, um, I think it should be solved without going to court.
Couldn't agree more, right? We are, we are two public bodies. And we do our work in public and I think that, um, we are certainly willing to do that and I, I strongly encourage and, and welcome the opportunity for, for the delegation to, to also be open and have public discussion as to uh, the pros and cons of, of ultimately the request as to why we believe it, it should happen and why they believe that it shouldn't. As well as why they believe there shouldn't be a meeting and why we believe there should be. I mean, I, I, I welcome that public discussion.
As do I.
With that, uh, I'm gonna move to public comment and then we'll come back to other dev, is that okay? Open up to public comment. Come on up, state your name, where you're from.
My name is Brian Beal, I live in Alton Bay. I spoke to you two weeks ago. I'm kind of flabbergasted by this correspondence. Um, I would ask, I know you don't want to incur legal fees, but is it, uh, within a reason to ask the county attorney? One is that correspondence valid as a unilateral communication? And number two is that if it wasn't a unilateral, um, uh, communication, uh, ninety-one A seems to have been violated if that were the case, right? If they were, the motion, cause I never saw any notice of a meeting that, uh, would take to make that decision. Maybe I'm wrong about the, uh, the rules, but I'm, um, you know, it seems to me that we're back where we were two years ago where meetings weren't being noticed, uh, properly and, um, you know, there was just chaos. So, um, I applaud you for taking these steps to, to further find the, um, the path of the delegation because it's certainly odd. Uh, if not downright, um, obstinate, so. Um, wait, I support your, um, actions tonight and I hope you get a satisfactory answer and we need to get a date to find out when this is gonna happen. In, in the meantime, we've got, um, programs that are left um, dangling because there's no decision being made. And, you know, in the case of the monies that the county would appropriate to help children, we've got children's, um, uh, well-beings that, that, that is not being addressed because this is hanging in the balance and I, it's just not, not appropriate, not fair. Thank you very much.
Brian, could you just spell your last name, please?
B E I H L, Brian with an I.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Um, yes, Patrick Wood from Laconia. Uh, just a couple of things, one, I want to, uh, thank the Bellnap County Nursing Home for their wonderful service, uh, that they do for the county, but also in particular, the Congregational Church has a church service there once a month on Wednesday morning. And it's just, it's such a rewarding experience. Uh, the staff make sure that the residents are there on a timely fashion, they uh, attend to them, um, and it's just, it's a very heartwarming experience, so I want to thank the nursing home, uh, for doing the wonderful job that they're doing. Um. The director mentioned, um, Medicaid and obviously we rely to a large extent on Medicaid. But the state budget is proposing a three percent. But the state budget is proposing a 3% cut in Medicaid for this coming fiscal year and another 3% cut the following fiscal year. So again, we're facing more issues than we should be facing because the legislature in its wisdom decides not to raise the appropriate amount of money needed and shift the burden back on to the county. So I think that's a concern that we all share. I want to second the comments that were just previously made about the legislative response or non-response, if you will, to your request. I think your proposed amendment or modified letter is perfect because it puts the numbers on there. And I think it's going to be very difficult for them to say that you haven't complied with the law. I don't understand the rationale there either. But I think the most important part of that is the 91A question that you've raised. And I wonder if perhaps when you send the letter back, you copy the Attorney General on that request. Just might get a little more attention.
Fair, to that point, right? So all we can go off is the letter that we received and it was signed by the chairman. It does not make reference that this is a delegation decision. It makes reference, right? So it's Chairman of the delegation, so he's one individual. I think the bigger question is how does, how does one representative believe they have the authority of the majority of the body of the delegation? Do you laterally make a decision, which I am certain they do not? Same as any one of us three commissioners do not have any authority as one individual. It takes a majority in order for something to happen, so.
I'm not aware that they've had any meetings in between.
There's been nothing in the public that's been notified, so.
So I think 91A, unless it doesn't apply to the legislature, but I don't think that's the case.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Bruce Larson from Alton. The conduct of the delegation here is outrageous. And it's part of a pattern of outrageous behavior on the part of the Chair and one or more other members of the delegation. We don't know here who else might have been involved. We saw in the budget hearing the total disrespect that the commissioners showed, that the delegation showed the Board of Commissioners, not even allowing your group to speak, but also to the public, not allowing anyone to speak until it was too late to make any difference at all. And if you can imagine what the reaction of the delegation would be if you as commissioners signed checks to these organizations, feeling that the delegation is basically defaulting on its responsibility to hold a hearing. And therefore, if you interpreted that as their consent to you signing the checks, obviously, that would be totally illegal without an appropriation. But we're seeing the flip side of that here. And whatever their reasoning is, and maybe they'll come up with some petty reason, the statute reads "shall," it doesn't read "shall" on the whim of the Chair or other representatives. And I think they are really thumbing their nose at the public and at the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Yes. Jamie Irving, Chair of the Bellnap County Conservation District. And I just wanted to convey our gratitude for your efforts on our behalf and the other outside agencies. So thank you for that.
Thank you, you're welcome. Any else from the public? Yes.
Jan Hooper, Center Harper. I just have a question. I had read, I think, in the newspaper that there were only 30 days where it would be allowed, the delegation to change what they decided to do with the budget and then get the Conservation District and the other groups' fundings back up. So is this all going to be a moot point as of April 30th?
No, no. So the 30 days, they have 30 days that they shall hold a meeting from the time that the clerk sends the notice that a request has been made. So that 30-day clock hasn't started. It won't start until, until the clerk through the county sends the notification to all of the representatives and all of the towns.
Good. I sure hope something can be done because as an 18-year employee of the Conservation District, I'm just mind-boggling that these people don't understand the relationship between natural resources and the economy of Bellnap County. It's just horrifying. But thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Moulton, I'm from Meredith. And I myself down here tonight to thank you for your support, that you have been supporting the outside agencies and especially the Conservation District and Extension. We are a utilizer of Extension. And I think we're encouraging you, and I think there are many, many residents in the county that will stand behind you as you continue to push the delegation to meet their responsibilities and your requests. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. And when they do, when they finally do set a meeting, I'm certain they will, please make sure all of those residents know the date of that meeting because it will be very important for them to be here and present during the public hearing. So the delegation can be informed to the benefits of these agencies. And me personally, I'm curious to know what the reasons are why they are not willing to support. The primary two agencies in Casablanca, we know mental health, but UNH Cooperative Extension and the County Conservation District as to what the reasonings are for not wanting to support those two agencies.
If I may address you again.
Absolutely, yes. This is an open, public meeting. We welcome conversation.
Sure. At the last minute, I made a couple of calls to members.
Yes.
And they do need some education as to the objectives and purposes of all these agencies. And I was quite surprised by their lack of knowledge, their lack of understanding of what these groups do do. So we maybe have been neglectful in meeting with our legislators to educate them and to explain the role of these agencies, so.
Thank you for those efforts. Yes.
Jan Hooper again. I know Lisa provides a very extensive report that explains what the Conservation District does. But their delegates are under no obligation to review that information. They just ignore it. Appears to be what happens based on one of the comments that one of the delegates said, well, we don't, we don't know what they do, but they're giving the information.
They have to be willing to accept the information to be fact. And as one representative relayed to me, that they refer to it as propaganda. And as I relate to them,
Couldn't.
you need to be willing to accept the information that is given to you by these agencies, that it's fact. And they are the experts in their area and know it is not at all propaganda. So they receive the information, but there has to be a willingness to accept that the information is factual and is something that they can base their decision off of.
Once again, I'm horrified. Thank you for telling me that. Never would have believed it.
Anybody else from the public? Okay.
I'd like to thank everyone that came tonight and had something to say. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. And as I said, stay tuned, right? Stay, pay attention to when the date is finally set. And as Mr. Walton has done, I would encourage you and everybody that believes in these agencies and these motions to contact your local representatives. The more we can get information directly to them one-on-one, I think there's a better opportunity for them to listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have anything for others?
I do not.
Steve?
I have nothing.
Nor do I. With that, declare the meeting to be adjourned.